Thank you. Welcome to our October seventh, two thousand twenty-four board meeting. And I thank you for coming. I see people out here that I know, I know most of you. I see a man, I'm supposed to see him, what, maybe two months now? So he's come to see me. But it's just about lunch, so. Um, all right, let's move on here. Craig?
Yes, sir.
I know you're still upset.
Yes, sir.
But this may do you some good.
I, I need it.
Would you, would you please play for us? Craig is an Alabama fan.
I appreciate my former president, reminded everybody, and Alabama was also a big game over the weekends. So thank you, Steve.
It's amazing.
Yeah. But thank you. And I'd be invited to. But pray, Father, we do thank you for this occasion, for the blessing that it is to, to be able to come before you and invoke you in your presence here with us today to consider, Lord, why we do that? Think about why we call upon your name, call upon your spirit to be with us today. Why we do that, Lord? Help us to remember that we need your help. We need your wisdom. We need your discernment. We need your presence here with us to, to settle this place in peace. Father, we need the wisdom that comes from on high, not the wisdom of man, but the wisdom that comes from you so that we can consider what is in fact, in the best interest of every citizen of our county. Help us, Lord, to keep in mind that it's a high quality and it calls for sacrifice. And these men, Lord, that you've given skills to, abilities to, Lord, they, they use those skills and abilities for your glory. Father, help them today to use those skills and abilities that you've gifted to them in the best possible way to serve their fellow man. And help them to feel a sense of accomplishment and appreciation from the community for what they do. When I think about our first responders, I think about the men and women that protect us every single day. They give up themselves, that their families sacrifice, Lord, they put their safety on the line. I pray, Father, for your richest blessings upon each and every one of them. May they feel your presence today and please protect them and bring them safely home to their families in Christ's name.
Amen. Thank you, Craig. Um, before we get started, does anybody on board need to recognize? I mean, we've got doctor, we've got senator, we have, uh, our tax collector. We, not tax, circuit, circuit clerk. Uh, we have landowner right here. Rankin County is well versified and made up here. And thank y'all for coming. I'm gonna start off and go straight to public comments. And Senator Jennifer Branning and Ms. Lisa Ireland, y'all are first on the list. Come on forward.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to this board for giving me just a few minutes to address you this morning. I will be brief. I see that you have a large agenda and I don't want to stand in your way of conducting the business of Rankin County. But now, my name is Jennifer Branning. I'm a candidate for the Mississippi Supreme Court. And you all know this is an extremely important position to the state of Mississippi. So I wanted to make sure that I did stop by and explain to you who I am and why I'm running and why it's important to hear me out in this race. We have a lot at stake here. And so I am originally from Neshoba County, which is where my husband and my, and we're raising our three boys there in Neshoba. My law practice is located in Philadelphia, where I've been for twenty years. And as a small-town attorney, I've had to do a little bit of everything, which is now to my benefit. I've done business transactions, real estate transactions. I have courtroom experience in the circuit courts, the chancery courts, the youth court system, where I've been special prosecutor and handled hundreds of cases for abused and neglected children, which is exactly where the rubber meets the road for Mississippians. I've done a state work where I've held hands with clients who have been weeping over grieving the loss of a loved one as we finalize papers. So I've really met Mississippians at their need and try to help them through some tough times. So it makes me a very well-rounded candidate for the Mississippi Supreme Court. In addition to all that, for the last nine years, I've had the privilege of serving in the Mississippi Senate, where I now chair the highways and transportation committee. So you all have seen me with that hat on. We have discussed road issues on many occasions. And so certainly, my service in the Mississippi Senate for almost a decade, I've done my part to pass laws and write legislation for Mississippi families and for the Mississippi economy to move us forward. But you know what? The laws that we pass are only as good as the justices that we have that will interpret those laws. And I know what it means to legislate. I've done that for almost a decade. And I'm telling you, that does not belong in the Mississippi Supreme Court. We need to make sure that we are electing justices that understand that, that only follow the law just like it's written. So I'm running as a constitutional conservative, promising you that I will be fair and impartial and uphold the law just like it is written for the future of our state. And so I'm here to offer a new generation of conservative leadership on the Mississippi Supreme Court. So I wanted to come by and ask for your vote and your support. I'd be honored by your vote on November the fifth. Thank you for taking a minute to listen to me. I appreciate all of you and your service to the state of Mississippi.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, if, if y'all want, if you need to leave, you're welcome. Uh, I'm pretty sure you're supposed to be at the Capitol. So at any time, you can go. Uh, all right, next, public comments. It's Drew Sears. How you doing, sir?
How are you?
Good. If you state your name and address, I think I have it.
Yes, sir. My name's Drew Sears. I live at four oh five Whitney Lane in Woodridge subdivision. Um, but I'm not gonna be able to follow that up very well. My, um, my purpose today is I've, I've had an issue with some of the work that's been done on our property. Mr. Calhoun, I believe you're somewhat familiar with this. Um, I've been dealing with Mr. Parker. He's been fantastic, but I wanted to come today and offer some comments. And I have some pictures if these haven't made it to y'all yet. Do you mind?
Bring them.
So, um, there's a lot of work going on in our subdivision. And as a result, a storm drain was dug out in our backyard.
This is the storm?
Yes, sir. So those are, those are pictures from our backyard. Um, and in the second picture, you can see I've circled one of our boundary markers and you can clearly see the other one. The concern that we have is the majority of this drainage ditch is on our property. Um, there is a fifteen-foot drainage easement from our eastern property line. However, that ditch, if you saw the measurements, it comes well past fifteen feet onto our property. Um, Mr. Parker has come out, he's assessed it, he's looked at it. He said it will require board approval for the culvert to be redirected. Um, the reason that I came today is to ask for an expedited resolution because we have a lot of neighborhood kids that come and fish in that pond and things like that. And I've had to keep them out of those rocks and away from that culvert, um, multiple times. And the, the main issue is the liability on my wife and I. So, um, I know Mr. Parker, like I said, told me that it would require board approval. So I'm just here to ask for an expedited solution.
I'm gonna give, let some board members know what happened. It was the, the drain of the culvert was stopped up and that was what was impacting the road out there on the main drag. The water from the road drains into a drainage basin and goes back behind his house. And of course, it was completely stopped up and that's the reason, uh, we had road failure out there and had declared emergency out there to get that road fixed that day. But like I said, this ditch has been there since the subdivision was put in. I don't know that the developers passed away now. Uh, I know the engineering firm that was overseeing this project, it wasn't the county. It was, but of course, we approved what was presented to us.
Yes, sir.
And the drain was showing up in a, uh, in the plat itself, being in a utility easement. For some reason, it got moved.
Yes, sir.
Of course, I know it's been like that for twenty-plus years.
We weren't aware either.
So I, Craig Slay is our county attorney. He can tell, give you the options or we can tell you our options that we can do.
Yep. So just to dial back, just to briefly, a little more context. Within the past couple of months, we were doing our ARPA project at Live Oaks. And so this discovery was sort of made as a part of the work associated with the ARPA project. Uh, if you recall, we had some really soft material that caused the road itself to fail. You all remember that discussion, maybe? Uh, and so what we did was we figured out what is the source of that, of that constantly wet road material and discovered that this particular drain outlet was clogged up and it was allowing water to settle actually in the roadbed. And so the solution obviously became get off right of way. Use your authority under Mississippi law to get off right of way to address that outlet so that you didn't have wet soil material in your roadbed. That was the, the calculation that you guys made. We asked for, and you approved an emergency deck that authorized us to get off a road right of way to do this. What we did not know at the time and could not have possibly known at the time was that the outlet itself had been mislocated by the developer of the property, the developer of the subdivision.
So that outlet had, I mean, there was an outlet that was stopped up and it was in the same place?
So the, the outflow is in the same place, yes, sir. Uh, when, uh, when we bought the house, it was completely covered up. I don't, I did not include that picture. I apologize. Um, but.
So it wasn't draining?
Uh, no, I have a, I have a picture inside the culvert and the water line is more than three-quarters of the way where it was standing. And we, we have a problem.
How long y'all lived on, in that house?
Uh, it was purchased in two thousand sixteen, I believe, something like that. Um, so it's, it's been covered up the entire time. We didn't, you know, we had no idea that it, it was a thirty-inch culvert.
Um. And I'm, I'm satisfied to let you guys know that it's, it's a developer issue. It goes all the way back to the time of the installation of the infrastructure to begin with. It, uh, for whatever reason, it was installed the way that it was. It didn't work. Uh, we, we see this routinely happen all over the county with subdivision development activity, especially this age where infrastructure kind of ages out.
Pictures.
And from time to time, you're gonna end up in a situation where infrastructure that was installed by the developer doesn't work anymore. Uh, what gets a little confusing for folks, Mr. Sears and others, is, is that uh, it, it is assumed from time to time incorrectly that infrastructure like this, which is, uh, stormwater improvements that are laid down and installed by the developer, that those somehow mysteriously become public property. They, they don't, they're not public property. We only accept that infrastructure that is literally in the road or the road right of way. That's your legal jurisdiction. The reason you had to make a finding to get, to get off of your road right of way to address this issue is because it is in fact contained to private property. So in order for you to get off of public property and get onto private property to address a matter that is affecting public property, you have to make a finding and that's what you did. In the course of this, it's been discovered that the plat as originally presented by the developer did not in fact locate, it was unclear from looking at the plat, where exactly is this drainage easement? Where is it in relation to the property? And then to make matters more confusing, what we discovered was, once we figured out where roughly the easement is located, we just, we discovered, well, the pipe itself wasn't put there. It was put on Mr. Sears' property, what became his property. Yes, y'all understand that, right? Okay, so we did what we needed to do. We got on private property and we fixed the issue. Now we have a road that is stabilized. So that's, that's mission accomplished. And so the, the unanswered question now becomes, what do we do about the fact that the work, the emergency work ended up taking place on this man's private property? And we didn't get permission, we didn't know we needed it? Right?
Mr. Mr. Parker is, is pretty, like I said, he's pretty well-versed in this. I've talked with him multiple times. The pipe comes between mine and my neighbor's house and it's twenty-six feet from the pond where it makes a ninety-degree turn and then comes thirty, thirty-one feet onto our, our property.
Let me ask you this, excuse me, but if we extended this pipe on out into the lake itself and covered that part up to get it into the HOA's pond, y'all's pond out there, would that be?
The, we're okay with any solution, obviously.
The pipe is still gonna be on your private property?
Sure, sure. And, and what, what Mr. Parker and I had talked about was a couple of options. It's a shorter distance to go straight into the pond, just cut the ninety out of it, take it straight into the pond, and then I could cover that whole thing up. But I told him, leave the culvert on our property. They'll just fill that, the ends of it in. I'll have my yard graded back out to remove the liability and everybody's happy.
Well, we were planning on meeting out there this week anyway and just get us a game plan and what needs to be done.
That may be the best solution here. It, obviously, a, a, a simple solution would be to just to take advantage of what the facts are now and try to address the property descriptions or whatever, remove the liability. Uh, there's a simple way to do that. My understanding is Mr. Sears is not open to providing any sort of easement to the HOA for that area where the, where the new outlet is located. That's his call. It's up to him. So, but what we've gotta do to address the problem, guys, is to acknowledge, and we can do this at any point in time. We can wait until after the meeting, Brad, when we actually have a solution and then come back and let you guys simply go back and look at your emergency declaration and authorize whatever additional work is necessary to resolve this issue and this pipe and then get out of there and be done with this. So that would be my get, my suggestion today. Let's have our meeting, get our description together. I want to address Mr. Sears' request for some sort of expedited relief or whatever. That, I mean, this situation's been in place for decades. Uh, and so I'm, I'm not inclined whatsoever to move this ahead of anything else that's a high priority for you guys. Let's, let's schedule our meeting, have our meeting, get out there and get some kind of game plan together and then address it as we can, right? As we have funds available, as we have, uh, as we have personnel available to do it, uh, as we have crews in the area. We can get all that handled, but I'm not inclined to, to push this ahead of anything else.
And, and we'll coordinate with you. We'll let you know.
Sure, sure.
And I mean, we'll be in touch.
Yes, sir. And in response to his comment, um, we now have a liability on our property where if, if a neighborhood kid falls and breaks his leg in that culvert because they, that's what kids do, they play in certain areas like that. I've had to keep them out of it multiple times. So my question is, and again, I'm not asking for this to be fixed today. I would just like somewhat of a speedy solution. Um, we're liable for that. It's on our property. We didn't put that hazard there. The county did.
Our county did not, the development.
Well, the county's the one who dug it out. And I understand the easements, I understand it had to be done. And we have no problem with, with, you know, we want the roads to be stable. We live in that subdivision. But I'm not, I'm not asking to be moved to the front of the line, but I'm asking not to be put at the back also.
Okay. Let's get the meeting done.
This week and we'll be in contact with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sears.
I appreciate you.
All right, do I have anyone else on the public comments only? Now, if you're on the agenda down further about a, something that's in the agenda, we'll get to that. All right, we'll move on, uh, old business. We need to approve minutes.
Motion to approve.
Jay makes a motion to approve. Our old business, do I have a second?
Second.
Sid seconds that. Uh, then I'll get a September thirtieth and October third. Consent agenda, have all y'all had a chance to look at the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Is anything?
Well, I, I don't know. Jay, on the trust mark, is that for ten years or I thought it was six years? Did you look at that?
Uh, that's gonna be under my section, Sid, uh, section B, approval of the MOU with Blue Fayette.
Is that on consent?
I don't think it's on the consent. Is there something on the consent?
No, my bad. It was on, it's on your, yeah.
Okay.
No, I'm good with, I'm gonna walk us through that when we get to my section, so.
All right.
All right. Anything else on the consent? Do I have a motion to approve the consent? Brad makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Scott seconds the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, Ms. Scott, I saw you on Fox News the other day.
You did?
Yeah, looked like the reporter to me.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to ask the board of supervisors to enter into a contract with Dallas Printing to print our jury cards. Currently, it's just a big manual process that we do. And, uh, I've contacted, um, David Dallas and he can do that for us. So we can actually save money, time, resources, county resources. So, um, I'm asking to get this started as soon as possible. And I have an example of what I have designed. I designed it myself.
Oh, my.
I think it'll help our voters too.
It'll get their attention, I'll say that.
It will get their attention. I think it'll cut down on our phone calls too because they, they have this U.S. Postal Service where they can see that they've gotten something from the sheriff's department and it's really from us. So they'll know exactly what they're getting before they get home.
All right, um.
But it's actually gonna save, uh, the county money, but I just need authority for y'all to enter into contract and to pay them and authority for me to export our data. No personal information. It's just their name, their address, when they're to come to court, what time and what courtroom to be in.
Okay. I tell you, everybody's good.
So I was just gonna point out to you guys that this is a type service that we will routinely see amongst many of our elected officials. I think this is our circuit clerk kind of modernizing and bringing herself into more of a process that would mirror what we do with the other elected officials' offices as well, whether it be a tax bill notice or whether it be any other type of notice like Homestead exemption. We routinely use these third-party services for this and they are cost savers.
Okay.
Michelle, with that, that QR code, if you scan that, would that give you the information where you could even add that to your calendar on your phone?
Absolutely. This is a first step in my process to do some more streamlining. You know, I wanna add, add some texting ability too. Cause oftentimes, it takes us a couple of days to get these stuffed and, and ready to go out. Um, I think we can even prevent from mailing out if we know all cases are gonna be settled. So we may even cut a whole mail out just because David Dallas can print it, get it to the post office within, you know, a day. Uh, but also I'm going to do some texting. If, uh, if we send a mail out, we usually send it about two weeks in advance. And so if cases settle on a judge's term a week in advance, we can text everyone to let them know that, hey, jury duty is settled and you go ahead and make your business plans or whatever plans that you may have for that week. So this, this is just step one of many things I'm gonna do, um, for, for our voters.
Okay, all right. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Scott makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Brad second, set motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. McNich, tax assessor, I called you a collector, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I've been called worse. Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, um, under item A, I'm just asking, um, for permission to adjust the twenty twenty-four Homestead exemption supplemental rule.
Motion approved.
All right, Brad makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Chase seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Petitions for change of assessment on twenty-three and twenty-four real property assessments.
Jay makes a motion.
Motion.
Scott seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
On C, uh, requesting authority to void the twenty-four tax sale for parcel G two sixty-three due to erroneous assessment and refund any tax sale purchaser.
Motion.
All right, Sid makes a motion.
Second.
Jay seconds a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Same thing on D, requesting authority to void the twenty-four tax sale for parcel L twelve twenty-six sixty due to erroneous assessment and refund any tax sale purchaser and also ask for a corrected tax statement from the tax collector.
Sid makes a motion.
Second.
Scott seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, um, final item is requesting approval of ad valorem tax exemption request for twenty-five, uh, tax year on the portion of building utilized by the American Legion. Um, this is located at one hundred Business Center Parkway in Pearl and it's currently identified as parcel E eight A four one twenty-one. And I put that on there. Um, this is actually a center. And so we would, um, break those parcels out.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Jay makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Brad seconds a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. McNich. Our tax assessor.
Our tax assessor.
Yep. Come on down, Mr. Pittman.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, I'm here to, we had, uh, advertised for a, to select a vendor for the, uh, household, uh, waste, uh, collection, household hazardous waste. And, uh, we have, we advertised, we had one respondent to the, uh, to the bid. However, their, uh, their bid was, uh, had a condition, conditional.
Oh.
And, uh.
What was the condition?
Uh, it's the proposal submitted contingent upon the right to negotiate mutually acceptable contract terms and conditions which are reflective of the work contemplated in the request.
Propose the documents.
Basically, we, we see your bid requirements and we agree to perform after we decide whether or not we really wanna do that or not. It, it's a completely unacceptable condition. It should be rejected out of hand and you guys should consider an alternate path which does not include accepting that.
So what happened to our company usually does?
They did.
Do we have? Okay.
So we're gonna reschedule the date. We normally hold this in the spring. Just a lot going on in the spring this year. So we're gonna just hold off and redo it in the spring, Friday.
And we'll do what we can. I think our plan is do what we can to make sure that every potential bidder that we know of has an opportunity to bid on it.
So we were moving today from what we normally do?
Well, we, we, I think in the past we've done one.
We did usually during the spring cleanup.
Right.
The week after.
Right. And since we kind of changed how we did the spring cleanup this year, this kind of fell through.
So are we missing out on some grant funds we had?
No, we'll still be able to use the grant funds.
Okay.
So we just need a motion to reject.
Uh, to, to be continued.
Okay.
Do we have, uh, consideration, do we have a motion to reject?
I'll make a motion to reject.
Brad makes a motion to reject. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jay got it, I thought.
Jay got it?
Jay got it. Jay got the second. All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion reject. Mike Harrison, road manager.
Mr. Harrison.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, Brad.
Uh, road work accomplished and scheduled for September and October.
Motion approved.
Brad makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I second.
Sid seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes.
Uh, got some permits.
Hey, Mike.
Yes, sir.
I've got three of those. They're not the same. Okay, you got two Atmos in district two. Can we handle those two together, C and D?
Uh, C, D, and B. B is Atmos.
Mm-hmm.
C, D, and E is Atmos. This is service line emergency repairs where they've got some leaks, Steve, on their line. So they're trying to replace those, so I could get approval on B, C, D, and E.
All right, I make a motion that we have B, C, and D.
D, D and E.
D and E.
Oh, I thought you said D.
Yeah, B.
B, C, D, and E, but. E is a.
Hey, why don't we just do them all, man?
No, E is a different company. E is a different company, isn't it?
No, it's Atmos. I looked, I just looked it up.
It'd just be easier to say do all the ones in district two?
Benton, Georgia Utility Permit.
It's a sub for Atmos, but it is an Atmos repair.
All right, I'm gonna second your.
All right, my motion is to do B, C, D, and E as E is the sub of Atmos.
That's correct.
And approve. You, you second that, Jay?
Yes, sir.
All right, I made the motion, Jay seconds. Any other discussion? I know, we could've went through it by the time. All in favor? Motion passes.
Uh, I'd like to take Mr. President F, G, and H, which is sent on.
Seaspire is eight.
And they all district four.
Seaspire is eight.
I mean, Seaspire, excuse me. F and G.
All I'm gonna ask, do I have a motion?
Yes, sir. Motion. For, for F and G.
All right. Do I have a second? All right, I have a motion to approve F and G. Uh, Scott made a motion, Jay second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion passes. Now H.
H would be request Seaspire permit along Baker Lane.
Motion approved, second.
All right, Jay makes a motion, Scott seconds a motion, any other discussion? All in favor?
See how easy that was?
Yeah.
I should've just read them all out. If the board don't mind, I would like to have a second of y'all's time for executive decision on personnel.
You have to talk to that guy about doing that now.
I'll think about it.
Thank you.
All right. We already have the need for such, so that won't be a problem.
Come on, Mr. Parker.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thankfully, I only have an item A.
Vanderbilt beat Alabama.
Did they really? I didn't, I didn't get to, I didn't get to watch much of it, Jay, could you tell me about it? Was it close?
I can't tell you how much I appreciate all the assistance. I wanna remind y'all what my dad said to me, "Son, you better not load your wagon." We may be having another conversation later.
My team doesn't have a wagon this year, so it doesn't really matter. I feel free to say what I need.
You're a dead loser.
Right, exactly, no doubt. Came close, but didn't. Uh, we have one item, item A, uh, no B, C, D, and E thankfully. Uh, it's Canal Place, this is a PRV development on Lake Harbor Road off of 43, District Four. Uh, we recommend approval of construction drawings, and all the county has is the road, and it's an existing road, so it's really just somewhat of a formality.
Would you kinda explain?
Nothing outside of the right of way.
It's a PRV property, and they have total control really of what goes in there and what don't. Our job is to make sure that our road and road ditch is taken care of.
And this is seven lots along existing Lake Harbor Road, seven or eight, I can't remember exactly.
Motion approved.
Jay makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Scott second, set motion, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. Mr. Slate.
Yes, sir.
I wasn't sure if you knew that. We actually talked about that before you got here, Mr. Bishop, so this is a repeat of a fun conversation.
Glad I can help out.
Absolutely. First item under my section would be a public hearing for the Michael and Tara Howington conditional use permit at 517 Parkway Circle, this is District Four property. Let me give you my cheat sheets here, thank Brian. We'll open that public hearing. Michael and Tara Howington are seeking a conditional use permit to construct a 1,600 square foot shop and pole barn that it will be located in what's known as the AE flood zone at 517 Parkway Circle. Property is inside the Dominion Lake subdivision, it's zoned RE1. Structure will have 1,024 square feet of open space, pole barn status, and 576 feet, square feet of enclosed use for personal storage. Uh, they've received an elevation certificate showing that the structure will actually be constructed four feet above the base flood elevation. Your new flood zone ordinance requires a minimum of two feet above base flood elevation, so this would be twice, twice above base flood elevation. Uh, with the approval from, and they have approval from the HOA for this structure. The conditional use permit will be approved contingent on submission of proper plans and completion of an approval by our review consulting engineer. We perceive no calls in opposition. At this time, I'll ask, is there?
I have.
I'm sorry.
Well, yeah.
Okay. At this time, I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Michael and Tara Howington conditional use permit request. Is anyone here to speak in opposition?
Well, not necessarily in opposition.
If you'll come forward, please, if you'll come forward, please. Before you address the board, please give your name and address.
Good morning.
Good morning, Doc.
Good morning, Bo Scales, I live at 191 Dominion, my wife and I live at 191 Dominion Parkway. Just a point of clarification, your dad said, oh, load the wagon.
Be careful not to overload the wagon. Don't overload the wagon.
And I'm not in opposition to this structure, I want that made abundantly clear. On the highway, I've never met the Howingtons. My concern is what dirt work is going to be done to increase the elevation so that this structure can be put there. Very simply, I learned, and don't, it is simple. When you change things, things change. When we moved out to Dominion 24 years ago this coming October, the lot right across the street from us was just woods. They built a home there, clear cut it, for lack of a better term. Water came across Dominion Parkway, now I can't remember, it's too far back, whether they bored under that road. I know they didn't cut it to put a culvert in. If there had been a culvert there, it was not open because the water was coming over. Well, they opened it up now, that nonexistent creek is a foot to two feet wide and a foot and a half deep. So that's neither here nor there. When the people that previously owned that property, uh, that home that the Howingtons are in now, when they started building, is my understanding is that the fellow that was doing that had a dirt company. He had access to plenty of dirt. And we had a motorhome at the time, and we were traveling a good bit, so I don't know exactly extent, but I know for at least a week, they were these double axled, bringing in dirt. I mean, for two weeks is what I was told, don't have the actual data. We had never, our home is 700 feet deep from Dominion all the way back to Mill Creek. We had never had water come out of those woods. After that, we had water come up to the tree line, which is probably about 400 feet back to the creek. And I had a video of that, but so, like so many people, I'm a deleter, and I delete pictures and videos except for Hartfield Academy, I've got a lot of them now, homecoming, night before last for grandchildren. But my point is, I deleted that, so I don't have, I could get it, that's not the point. Things change because this fellow brought, my assumption is because so much dirt was brought in, the topography of that and the water flow had changed. Now, the reason I'm here, and I think the reason that the board got involved, the county got involved, because I've requested that, hey, I think this dirt need, hardly needs to stop until a proper evaluation and assessment of what is the downstream or upstream effect on neighbors is going to be when you start bringing this elevation up. And that's the only reason I'm here. Whether it's a 1,600 or 1,500, whatever he wants to propose to build, or 5,000, it's no concern to me. It's the dirt work. What's the result of bringing up the elevation? And when we first moved there, I wanted to go back to the creek and get some of that, I would call it, it's silt really, but topsoil, to put in my garden. Well, couldn't do that because my understanding was you can't take in or bring out dirt in a wetlands, or AE, I believe it's AE. I don't know whether that's true or not, I did my research at the time, but it's 24 years ago and I don't remember. But my point is, my only concern is, if this is approved, or if the edict, let's call it that, of this board is that, hey, we've had a proper assessment and valuation of the topography of that land by a qualified and certified person, and that there's gonna be no impact on anybody else either upstream or downstreamed, and I can go eat Rosh Christmases now, I can go home.
Well, this is my feeling here. We have it on here to approve its conditional use with some conditions. Brian, explain that.
Yes, sir, we're still waiting.
And there has, since you made us aware, uh, our office has been heavily involved. And tell us, what are, where are we at?
Yes, so we have a flood elevation certificate, but there was, I think Tim asked for some additional paperwork. Uh, we're waiting on some additional hydraulic information from the Howingtons' engineer, and we haven't received that yet.
That's correct, we have not received.
All right.
And what we're waiting on is exactly what he's referencing, is what are the hydraulics, and what are the effects of the additional dirt that's coming in there for the pad for this new building or whatever?
That's one pool. All right, I would like to table this until we get the information that we need to have. I don't want, I don't want to go backwards, and from what I understand, it could be here soon, and we have a meeting within, what, 10 days or less?
Our next meeting is on the 15th. And then the meeting after that would be on, I think on the 30th?
Okay, well.
31st, uh, and then, of course, we'll have our first November. So we've got three options out into the future where this board could move to table consideration, meaning there's been no approval of anything.
And the most important thing that we're looking at is what we're waiting on.
It carries the day, what we're waiting on from the applicant's engineer is the answer to the question that's before this board.
And if we get it this week, we can approve it.
You could, you could take action on the 15th.
You said you could approve or disapprove.
Or disapprove, that's right.
But you didn't say what I'm saying for you.
Our engineer will give us a recommendation.
Well, my only concern, Chairman, is that J.R. Halloman told Nixon, you can't put the toothpaste back in the tube. I don't wanna get down the road and we can fish off our deck, that's what I'm trying to avoid. What goes in that 1,500 square foot, I, no concern.
Yes, sir.
That would be an HOA concern, not this board's concern, and I can't go back, once it's done.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Howland, I know you live out there and you have a home on this property, don't you?
Yes, sir.
And it probably, your home, you have a very nice home.
Yes, sir.
And you are probably the closest to where this water could rise.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. We've, so we purchased the home a number of months back. We talked to the previous owners, didn't have any, they had no, no problem with flooding, tons of runoff. There is a creek back there that's very disappointing, because we thought we could play in the creek that lies about two inches high most of the time. So we, it's 10 foot down, runoff doesn't seem to be a problem for us. Now, I wanna first of all say, I have spent 25 years in ministry, I work at Brandon Methodist Church right up the street. I have no knowledge of how any of this works, and so I have not always bid. Uh, I can pray about it, but I can't figure out where to go. So, so we've been new to the process, and so we've made, you know, trying to wish we would have done some stuff. And I do understand Mr. Scales' concern, you know, it's valid. I will say that that creek that he's referring to is not the one that runs behind my property. But I do, I do understand that that is a concern for him. And I understand not only this moment, but he's had other concerns with other people who have done any kind of tree removal or things like that in the neighborhood. And so I can't speak to that, but I can speak to the fact that we don't have any form of runoff issues and that the, that the neighbors around us who have experienced it on each side of us have said it's not been a problem. The previous owners have said, we don't have a problem, we have plenty of clearance. And, you know, we're not, we're not trying to create a huge problem, but we bought this home with the idea that we could do this to make our home better. And, you know, I got, I got two kids that wanna get in the pool, so.
Well, I don't know if we might get this year, because you gotta build a pool, dude, don't you?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right, well, look.
You have your engineer on the job to get that.
Yes, I will say part of, and we actually contacted their office staff to be pushed back. When, when Tim contacted us a couple of weeks ago, said we need this, we immediately went to the hydraulic engineers about this. We talked to three different ones, and I can't remember the surveyor's name that did all the work for us.
Do you? Yeah, that's Don Garner.
Yes, Mr. Garner, there was gonna be no problem, like all of the, all of, all three engineers, and the reason we talked to three is Mr. Don was trying to find out which one of them could quickly get this process done before today. And all of them said, hey, we'll sign, if you will take a sign to say it's gonna pass, it's just we gotta figure out the calculation. So all three of them, and they've worked together, have given us no indication or worry that this will pass as far as that.
So what, because the first two said no?
No, 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 absolutely not, no. It was the idea, because we, we were like, how quickly can we do this? And one of them referred us to another, and actually, the first one is the one doing it now because the other two couldn't get it done, because we were just in such a time crunch to try to get this done in a week and a half. So we apologize and didn't wanna waste your time, we actually asked if push is back, but I think the idea is that if we can get that this week, then it can be approved with the condition of that.
If I can suggest, gentlemen, one of the reasons why I appreciate the Howingtons saying, hey, can we just put this off until a later date? Unfortunately, our process requires us to do notifications and set public hearings, so the process doesn't allow us just to figure out where to move a meeting, right? Or when to move a public hearing, because you gotta notify everybody. So, so that wasn't possible, so we kept the hearing date today. Mr. Scales has appeared and given you his information. I think our process will require that Tim will review an engineered analysis of the hydrology. That's coming, we don't have the data, we can't do that review yet. My suggestion would be that you guys table this matter until October the 31st. And we will hear about all of this at a tabled, a reconvening of this hearing, and everybody is now being notified if the board's willing to entertain a motion to table it to the 31st. Why my suggestion on the 31st? To give us plenty of time to get all of our ducks in a row and make sure everybody's questions are asked before we actually make a decision. And maybe by the 31st, we'll have the question asked to a point where we don't have to put a contingency on it. I'm not saying that that's gonna happen, I'm just saying that's a possibility.
That way everybody have a.
If we do it the 15th and the engineer still hasn't got anything to Tim, we're tabling again.
The sensitive, what made this so sensitive is when you started, you were without really a permit. And you were, some of your dirt field was in the flood plain.
Yes, sir.
Floodway.
We'll have to remove some of that, and like I said, I apologize, we went.
I mean, that's why we're going, we're doing it exactly the way the engineers say we can do it, or if they say we can't.
When, when we started the, I came to the Board of Supervisors and they sent me to the wrong office, they actually sent me to this office. And a young man over there told me, he said, no, you only need a permit when you're building. I said, well, I wanna get a permit to do dirt, and they were like, no. So then later, he, once this process got started, like I said, I do youth ministry, not. And so I, I got some, I went the wrong way, and so I, but we immediately, as soon as we could stop the process and do whatever we can do to comply. So just from my understanding and clarification, once the, once the engineers come back, because, you know, every one of them have said this is, you know, it's gonna meet everything.
The main thing is you don't have more water runoff after than you do currently.
Yeah, so once they come back with that level that's, to my understanding from the engineers, it's not a problem at all that it's going to fit that, we should be good, right? There's no other thing.
We'll find out when we get to the hearing.
Gotcha, 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 just no more information from us is what I'm asking.
Right.
I don't think so. Okay, thank you, and I'm gonna make a motion to table it till the 31st.
Second.
All right.
Thank y'all so much.
Let me do this, and then I'll, I make a motion to table it till the 31st. Jay, second, set motion, any other discussion? All in favor? Now then, Mr. Scales, you got it. Make it quick, make it quick.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I know there's no problem with runoff now, all I'm asking is, what happens when you bring that dirt? These topoes and elevations, they ain't rocket science, I've walked mine, I know what they are. So if we bring up four feet over here on point A, what does that do to point B that doesn't have that?
That's what's the engineer.
I understand that, but I wanted to make, I wanted to address his, his comment about, there's no runoff now.
Now.
That ain't the problem.
Yeah.
It's futuristic is what I'm talking about.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir, thank y'all so much.
That's, that's what we're looking at.
That is exactly what we've asked them for, is free and toast. The dirt that's in there now that exists now versus what's coming in there, what's the difference, how does it affect the landfill?
All right, we have voted and approved to table it to the 31st.
That's correct.
All right, so now.
Everybody is on notice that the matter has been tabled to October the 31st. There won't be any additional notifications, there won't be any notices of public hearing published. This is the notice, in your board meeting at this time, that matter has been continued by way of tabling to October the 31st at 9:00 AM, same place. Everybody's on notice, okay?
Thank you.
Mr. President, the next item, before we move to item B, I wanna take a personal point of privilege to point something out that is a new way that Rankin County addresses. to point something out that is a new way that Rankin County addresses certain very specific land clearing activities. Normally, Rankin County does not require any sort of permit ahead of time to simply clear property.
Hold on. Mr. Howington, thank you for your patience and I like your, uh, attitude. Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Typically, Rankin County does not require the request for an application for a permit to do simple dirt clearing, land clearing activities, removal of trees, moving dirt around on site. We get exercised if somebody starts taking proper, I'm sorry, taking fill material off-site. That's an issue. That becomes mining activity. But if you're just simply clearing land, there is one conti- contingency to that that I want to start informing the public about. If the property is in a flood zone, if the property is in a flood zone, you have to apply for any land clearing activity ahead of time.
Yeah.
That's what caught Mr. Howington. We don't normally get sideways over clearing property. But when it's in a flood zone, you have to come talk to us about what you're going to do for these very reasons that we just talked about. Any activity, any sort of fill activity, any sort of adjustment to what is already a flood zone or flood risk hazard property, that's an issue and it has to be addressed ahead of time. The Townington was trying to fill in a floodway. That's a bad no-no. You don't, you don't do that. That's one of the reasons why we want to see it ahead of time and know about it ahead of time. So hopefully, the word is starting to get out. By the way, you adopted that amendment to your zoning ordinance about three or four months ago. So I want to make it clear to everybody in the public, check it, check that property and make sure you know the status of the property before you do any kind of clearing activity on that property. All right? Mr. President, item B under my section is consideration of and potential action to approve an MOU between Rankin County, the City of Pearl, and Bloomfield Equities LLC that is further to a local and private piece of legislation adopted by the Mississippi Legislature in both twenty-twenty-three and then amended in twenty-twenty-four that provides authorization for public support on an annual basis for the continuation of mi- minor league baseball at Trustmark Park in the City of Pearl. So I, I want to turn your attention to that MOU, a copy of which you have in your packet.
Yes, sir.
This MOU you've seen, this MOU is the document, this is the agreement that carries out what the legislature authorized. So this is a separate agreement between the parties concerning what the legislature authorized to be done.
This is the one that has the correct sentence.
Yep. Yes, sir. This, this has corrected language. And by the way, the document that you're looking at has already been executed on behalf of the other two parties. The City of Pearl has executed and Bloomfield Equities LLC, the owner of the stadium, has executed this. It, it simply becomes you, you guys' obligation. Here are the terms, I think, that are of the most importance to this board. Your annual commitment, the commitment of the county is, is capped at four hundred thousand dollars. That's the maximum amount of eligibility, uh, under the MOU, four hundred thousand dollars annually. The legislature put a time limitation cap on the authorization. It extends until the end of the year of twenty-thirty-five. Okay? That's the maximum term length on what, on this agreement. It can't go beyond that. There had, there is language here that allows for the termination of this agreement once all the parties are in agreement that it needs to be, and that could happen. So there's flexibility for that to happen if necessary. City of Pearl has obligated itself to pay up to, well, not up to, to pay one million dollars annually for the support of the stadium. So the total public facing contribution to the stadium, unless there's other revenue that I'm not aware of, is one point four million dollars. You guys, the county taxpayer being in for four hundred thousand, City of Pearl being in for a million. Any questions about?
Are you going to work something on, out with us, too?
Yeah, well, I'm in. What, what do you think we need to do, Mr. President?
Uh, I'll make a motion we approve. I don't, I, I think we've taken it far enough.
No.
I make a motion to approve.
Yeah, I second.
Sid seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Gentlemen, I have, uh, at least a couple of matters on top of, uh, your road manager's suggestion that we need an executive session on personnel. We've got some, uh, some litigation that we're going to be talking about and we've got some other matters that touch and concern things like economic development that'll also be, uh, something that I want to visit with you about in the executive session.
All right, Ken.
Morning.
Uh, the first item I have is authority to publish the detailed revenue and expenditure report for the solid waste fund, which is required for the fiscal year.
Most approved.
Jay makes most approved. Scott seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Item B is authority to publish, uh, the board's travel for fiscal year twenty-four.
That's approved. Jay makes a motion.
Second.
Scott seconds a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
The next item is approval for payout number four to Southeastern Pipeline and Environmental Services. This is for Oak Grove Ditch Stabilization. It's one of our upper projects in District Five. The payment amount is four hundred seventy-one thousand, nine hundred twenty-eight dollars, three four cents.
Most approved.
Yeah.
Second.
All right, I got a motion to approve. I tell you, second. Let's see it. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Item D is authority to publish notice of advertisement for requests for qualifications. And this will be advertised on October twenty-third and the thirtieth. And this is, uh, for energy, energy service providers to provide a energy conservation equipment and services. And this is falls under the Energy Services Contract for Rankin County.
Much approved. Second.
Ken makes a motion. Scott seconds a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passes.
Um, item D, a while back, we advertised for fleet leasing and fleet management services, uh, to provide county vehicles. Um, we've received, we've advertised, we've received two bids. Uh, we've received a bid from Enterprise Fleet and Acme Auto Services. Um, we've reviewed both those bids and after discussion, this was mainly to provide vehicles to the Sheriff's Department. And after reviewing the bids and discussions, we believe it would probably be best not to accept either bid. So we asked the board to reject both the bids.
All right. And we are talking about item E.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to reject. Second.
Brad makes a motion to reject. Sid seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
It's rejected.
We do want to thank the bidders for bidding and going through the process with us and we learned a ton about this whole fleet leasing thing. Uh, and it just, it, it worked itself out from a financial consideration standpoint where it didn't make sense to do this at this time. But that doesn't mean that we won't be revisiting this issue later.
All right. It looks like that I'm not going to finish before ten o'clock.
Okay. I do have one item of additional business real quick, just to clean some stuff up. Because of the hurricane situation, um, and some other issues, we've, we're asking the board to amend previous authority for Brett issued travel to Florida and move that to October fourteenth and seventeenth. He was supposed to go this week, but they've moved it to next week.
October what?
Fourteenth, seventh, through the seventeenth to review the higher drugs.
Okay. This would be a motion to add an amendment to a previous travel approval.
All right. Do I have a motion to add?
Make a motion to add.
All right. You made a motion to add. Scott, uh, Brad made a motion to add. Scott second that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion, all right, now it's added. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the travel time from fourteenth through the seventeenth of October.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Scott seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
It's approved.
What part of Florida is, what service is it?
Which is in the storm's path right now.
It's coming right toward there.
It is, it's Bradenton and then.
And we may amend this again.
We may. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, who wants to go next under additional business? We've got two people. Do you have any more additional?
Not under additional, no.
You don't, yours is. Okay. No more additional business. Do I have a motion to go into executive?
Make a motion to discuss the need.
Okay. Jay makes a motion to discuss the need for executive.
I second.
Sid seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
All right. We, now, we need.
Personnel, litigation, potential economic development. Make a motion on executive session for those reasons.
All right. Jay made the motion.
I second.
Sid seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aha, made it.
They made it.
Ten o'clock.